All right, it being 7:00, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. We do have a quorum of four commissioners. First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Anyone wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on your right, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. I do have a sign-in sheet with one name, and it's Gerald Hammond.
I'm Gerald Hammond. I live in Inglewood East Mobile Home Park on the Smamish River. I have some questions that maybe you guys could address when you start talking. One of the questions I have is, I think there's six mobile home parks in the city of Kenmore. Could you let me know where they are? I know where some of them are. I don't know if I know about all of them. Also, I have a question about the density. I don't know how that works. If you could explain how the density works for the mobile home parks, you know, having too high or whatever. And secondly, or lastly, Inglewood East is on the Smamish River. I presume it could still be sold and developed. I don't know if that's the case or not. And there's another one that's just west of Inglewood East. Can't remember the name of that one. It's on the slough also. And I don't know if they would be in the same situation as us, but I guess I'm just looking for some, you know, how you guys figure the density and the location of the six parks we have. I think I know where they all are, but I think there's two of them on the slough. There's one behind Jay's Cafe, I think. And then there's one up there on Larch Way. That's a bigger one. I think a developer's bought the properties for that one. I'm not sure. And I don't know if that's all of them, or if I'm correct in where they all are. So I guess if you could, just kind of explain the density and what the situation is for Inglewood East. I don't know how close Inglewood East is to the maximum density thing. Maybe you could, you know, let me know on that, too.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thanks so much, Gerald. So I'm going to invite other people to comment, but before I do, I'm just going to say, we're volunteers on the planning commission. The people sitting at that table to your left are full-time city staff employees. They advise us on the kind of things you've asked. So I'm going to invite them to answer your questions when they come up and talk. But they are certainly legitimate questions. Does anybody else want to render citizen comment? Going once, twice, all right, closed, unless I get a reconsideration. All right, that item of the agenda is closed. The next item on the agenda is approval of the November 21, 2017 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend?
Move for approve.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Now, I don't recall the minutes coming through our email package, but I think you'll all see it in front of you. If you need time to read it, let me know. If you don't, you're good. Are we good? We're good? All right, no discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is Housing Strategy Plan, Preserving Existing Affordable Housing. I invite the city staff and their consultants to the presentation table. So can we address Mr. Hammond's questions? I don't know if you noted them.
Is this on?
Can you tap it? You want to tap it?
Here we go. Good evening. We'll try this again. I will try to answer Mr. Hammond's questions. As to where the six mobile home parks are in the city, there are two of them that he mentioned, down on Northeast 175th Street that border the river. There are two on Northeast 181st Street, one on the north side of the street where I think it's like a tobacco shop. It's that same property. The one on the south side is, I think, three parcels down from the entrance to Safeway on Northeast 181st. There's one on Bothell Way. Again, he mentioned, I think, back behind Jay's Cafe. And then the other one is right next to City Hall. The larger piece of property is actually in the city of Bothell, so it is not actually in Kenmore, that large mobile home park. The way the density works is that the city calculates density based on dwelling units per acre, and every parcel has probably a base density, and it may have a larger density if you provide density incentives, for example. So we take, to figure out just the most rudimentary density analysis, we take the acreage of the property, we divide it into numbers of acres, because we usually have the property size in square feet. You divide it into acreage and then multiply that by the number, the base density, and that ends up with how many units could conceivably go on a property. Could Inglewood East be sold and developed? I don't think there are any constraints on any of the current mobile home parks that would prevent them from being sold and developed, but it's a question of what the leases say and the owner's desires. How close is Inglewood East to the maximum density? I think it's over 80%. I can't remember. One is 86 and one is 88, I think, percent of the maximum allowable density. They are already close to that. So I think those were the questions.
You probably provided us with this. Excuse me, but what are the density limits in the mobile home parks? And is there a difference between the parks?
Right, yeah, there definitely is a difference. I can tell you on Northeast 182nd Street, so this is the one next to City Hall, the maximum zoning, if you use density incentives, it's 72 dwelling units per acre. Without those density incentives, I believe it is 48. There were, let me look here. Right, 48. That's in the downtown residential zone. On Northeast 181st Street, both of the mobile home parks are in the downtown commercial zone, and the maximum zoning, again, with density incentives, is 72. Without density incentives, it's 48 dwelling units per acre. For the property on Northeast Bothell Way, that particular property is zoned R24, that's residential. So the base density would be 24, but with density incentives, you could get up to 36 dwelling units per acre. That property is also in the TOD, so that's the Transit Oriented Development District. And the maximum density, if one were to choose to develop under that program, would be 150 dwelling units per acre. And then on Northeast 175th Street, both of those properties are zoned residential 12, which is 12 dwelling units per acre. The maximum you could get with density incentives is 18.
Do you know the size of each of these?
I do.
Properties?
Yep.
I know you probably gave that to us.
Right, in fact, it was, the information was included in your packet of October 17th, and I can put it up on the screen. I have that particular chart, if that would be helpful. It's, it was an 11 by 17 sheet that provided all of this information.
Okay. I'm glad Gerald raised those questions, because it kind of relates to some of the things I was thinking about. All right, anybody else? Okay, then proceed, if you would, with the...
Sure. So the purpose of tonight's meeting was to just introduce, flesh out, think about alternative scenarios that the planning commission might be interested in that would achieve two goals. And those two goals were sort of brought forward, I think, by the planning commission. The two goals were to preserve existing affordable housing, but also to preserve housing density. So the concern that this additional density also contributes to the affordable housing question. So in an effort to balance those two things, staff came up with six different scenarios that are outlined in your materials. And then it's possible that commissioners will have additional ideas, so we can handle this a couple of different ways. I can quickly run through all of the scenarios, and then you can discuss them, or we can go scenario by scenario and try to answer questions. It may be, you know, we haven't done a lot of research on these scenarios. That's the whole point of this evening, to say, well, why don't we get some more research on this particular one, maybe that we're more interested in? So we may need to take down questions and then come back with additional information. I also will say that I think it's probably worth the commission discussing the differences between the mobile home communities and whether those differences would lead you to, in a different direction, as far as the scenario went.
All right. There aren't that many scenarios. I mean, it's, I think, six?
That we came up with.
That you came up with. So I'm inclined to do a little bit of time on each. I mean, there are a couple I'm much more interested in than others, but I don't want to presume. So why don't you give a few comments, if you want to add to what's already here? I suspect everybody's read what you put here, but if you want to elaborate on anything, let's start with Scenario 1. Go with that, and I'll invite commissioners to raise questions.
Sure. So Scenario 1 would be an amendment to the zoning code that would make mobile home communities a permitted use in the zone. In some zones, I think material I sent out in your last packet, mobile homes are, mobile home parks are non-conforming uses in some of these zones. So this would make them a permitted use, would limit other permitted land uses, but allow a future path to redevelopment. This is something that some of the other communities around us have done. It was the preferred scenario from the homeowners advocate, and really what it does is it just sets out a more deliberate approval process for considering the mobile home parks, sort of park by park, and then a public process would be required to look at the trade-offs in a comprehensive plan and zoning change. So in some ways, this defers the decision and would allow each community to do their own path to redevelopment if the property owner wished to. It could, it would in the immediate reduce development capacity. If someone was anxious to redevelop at this point, that would be a potential constraint. If the mobile home community is already at or close to density, I wouldn't see this as a huge issue, potentially.
Questions? Mike?
Why are some of these parks non-compliant?
Well, they're non-conforming, probably because the use is not listed in the chart currently. And I'm thinking of these two downtown commercial ones, for example. The downtown commercial chart that says allowed uses does not include mobile home park. So they're non-conforming as to use, because they're not an outright permitted use in the zone.
Are those zones including residential use?
They, I don't, well, they include multifamily use, those zones. There may, and I don't even think there's a retail requirement on the, or a commercial requirement on the main floor in this area over here. But, so multifamily residential is allowed, but mobile home park is not currently.
Is mobile home park a defined and acknowledged part of our code?
Yeah, it's a defined term. And it's one of the list of 50 or 51 standard uses that appear in all zones, and then they're sorted out between whether they're permitted or conditional or prohibited.
And all of these parks predate the incorporation of Kenmore, for example, in the adoption of our...
I think so, yeah.
...city regulations?
Right. So I think the material that I had is that three, three of the six are non-conforming.
Just to follow up, are they non-conforming because they're manufactured homes? Or are they non-conforming if they were to be, for example, single-family residential? Would they still be non-conforming?
Well, single-family residential would be non-conforming. Because it's not a permitted use in the downtown commercial zone. So...
I just wanted, that was really my question. So that, it's not that they're non-conforming because they are manufactured homes.
No.
They're non-conforming regardless.
Right. Right. And in fact, the three that are non-conforming are the two on Northeast 181st Street in the downtown commercial zone, and the one on Northeast 182nd Street. And that, I also have the overhead for that. That was Attachment 7 to the November 21 packet.
Thank you. So when you say, I hope I'm not cutting anybody off, when you say this is the preferred approach, and you cited some municipalities here, is this also what Tumwater did?
I think the case in Tumwater, they had upzoned the property, if I recall. I don't know if they had an overlay.
I remember the MHC presenters last week, many of whom are here tonight, welcome, were saying, and this left me confused, because I think you had told us a few meetings ago, Tumwater has prohibited development or redevelopment of its mobile home parks.
Some of them, yeah.
Right. And that is legal, and I think that's probably right, because nobody's vested in a, nobody's submitted an application for redevelopment, redevelopment, which is the, typically the bright line for vesting in a property right to develop according to the existing code. So they changed the code. Now they're subject to a new non-development code, so to speak.
Right.
But then the MHC reps were saying, well, they could apply, I think, to change that use, or something like that. And I was left confused, because it was very different from what you had said.
So I think it's possible that we're talking about different mobile home parks, because they are not all treated the same. I do remember that in Tumwater. There was one that was near a commercial zone, I think, and that one did not have the overlay put over it. But I don't want to go too far down the road of what exactly it was, but I certainly can add that to the list of things to look into, what the difference was.
Well, let's get, let's, I don't want to dwell too much on Tumwater, but I do remember the representative from the MHC saying that other cities around, and these may be those cities, I think Linwood was mentioned. I don't see it here, but I do see you mention Bothell, Snohomish County, and then you say other jurisdictions. So what are they doing? You know, what is their process or constraint on redevelopment? And what are the exceptions to that?
Yeah. So what I can tell you, the one I'm most familiar with is Bothell. And again, I want to emphasize that we have not done the research that we would need to do, if any of these ideas you want to pursue.
Well, what do you have in mind here?
So the Bothell, in the Bothell example, there is a list of, mobile home parks are one of the permitted uses, and I believe there's a list of other, maybe 15 or 20 other uses that could go on the property, less intensive uses, I understand. And then the idea is, if the property is to be redeveloped to, for example, a multifamily or a significant commercial use, then they have to get a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone. I think that's the way the overlay works. Is that right? Great. I got it, yeah.
Okay. So, I don't want to cut anybody off. Anything else on that? Okay. So this would clearly help preserve the current use and the structures that are there, and it makes it harder to redevelop, but that's the intent.
Right.
But it doesn't address that other concern we raised, which was increasing density to increase supply of housing in a market where there's an imbalance.
Yeah, it kind of defers the question, is what it does. It pushes the decision of how redevelopment should occur off to the future. So it's kind of like...
It's like a moratorium.
It's putting on the brakes, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that would then put more pressure on the housing market, because of the demand for housing continuing to increase while this property is taken off the market effectively.
Well, I think it would depend on how quickly the property owner wanted to pursue redevelopment. For example, if the property owner was not interested and would not have pursued redevelopment anyway, it basically has no impact. If, on the other hand, the property owner was anxious to redevelop and really wanted to build additional housing units, yeah, they'd have to come in right away.
That's true of any property owner.
Right. But what I, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not a moratorium. It's just how quickly does the person want to come in and pursue the option that's in front of them.
Well, it would delay that process.
Right.
So at best, it would be a much more time-consuming process.
Yep.
And you've got these other conditions, public process to amend the comprehensive plan, so it would be subject to a city council vote or a planning commission review.
Probably city council, or here in example.
So the extra delay would only, would occur as demand increases for housing in this market and probably prevent relief and equilibrium, or some closer...
That's your perspective? Right, sure.
Increase in supply, yeah. Okay, well, I see it as sort of addressing one of the concerns, but not, and only actually hurting the other concern. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. I might point out that the difference between the zoned capacity of those properties now and the current number of units is a matter of about 200 units. And the city exceeds, at the adoption of the comp plan update, the city exceeded its growth target by at least 1,500 units, I believe, and has made upzones in other areas of town. So if you want to do, or if the council wanted to apply this restriction, it wouldn't make a significant impact on the city's growth capacity versus its growth targets.
Yeah. You know, I kind of wonder about that growth capacity, because we can rezone all we want, but until somebody really wants to build, it doesn't help. I remember we talked about that when we rezoned the 522 corridor, and zoning doesn't make any difference until somebody wants to invest. So that's always going to be true. These might be more, I wonder if mobile home parks might be more attractive for redevelopment, because these locations are pretty attractive. They're on the slough, they're near downtown, and they're all horizontal. In other words, there's only one level of structures. So if there were an upzone, there'd be a chance to, you know, for, for going vertical, so to speak, and building many levels of structures and far more units than would be currently allowed. That might be a really attractive incentive. But, anything else on this one? Scott?
I had a question on, the last sentence on Scenario Number 1 says the impact likely would be negligible on properties where the MHC is at closer to the max allowable density. Are you saying that it's going to be a cakewalk for them, or do they have to go through the whole process of...
Yeah. What I'm suggesting is that if you had a development that was already at 86 or 88% of your allowable density, I'm not sure that there would be a push for redevelopment anyway, because you couldn't, unless there was a huge upzone on the property, you couldn't really redevelop. You might get eight, 10, 15 more units. So I guess I didn't perceive that this would be a real impact on those properties that are...
Because you didn't think that they would redevelop, because they're almost at capacity?
That they would not redevelop, because they're almost at capacity.
Is there, I'm sorry, are you, I didn't want to cut you. Is there a reason why these parcels, or any of these parcels, would be poorly suited for an upzone, like environmental constraints, or, you know, burden on the surrounding properties?
Hard to say. Out of context, oh, that the mobile home park connects to the Smamish River would have, you know, the shoreline regulations that would be applicable. You'd have to look case by case at what that would mean if you upzoned a particular piece of property and how it related to the surroundings. So I don't know if we could give a complete answer this evening on that.
Right. Go ahead, Scott.
On that note, it would be nice to know what the environmental restrictions would be, because if down on the slough, you've got units within 20 feet of the water, and you're never going to be able to, when they, they'll never let you build on that where it's built on now with pads, then they probably aren't going to have a motive to redevelop, I would think. I mean, I don't know how it would work out, but it's something to consider. I mean, I always thought in this process is that we want to, you know, figure out what, you know, what we should work on preserving and work on maybe having development take place and transfer some, you know, of the density to another trade. I don't know what the technical term for that is.
Yeah, that's the second scenario that we can talk about.
That's a nice segue. I think we've exhausted the comments on number one. I just jumped right in, and I'm, I think we're ready for number two here.
Yeah, and we did, Attachment 8 to your November 21 packet had information on the environmental constraints to the properties. I also can pull that up if need be, so that the one certainly down by the river and the one actually on Northeast Bothell Way at the north part of the property is impacted by wetlands. There's, those three are also potentially impacted by floodplain and seismic hazard. So again, that's Attachment 8 to November 21.
Sorry, Attachment 8 to the November 21 packet?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And some of the packets, do we have a map of them, where they are?
Right.
I'm sure we do, but I...
So the map was in an earlier packet. Let me see if I can find it quickly. It was attached to, actually, it was the very first set of materials, I think. So that was October 17, I believe. There was a map that showed where the six mobile home parks were, sort of generally.
Oh, I got that. I have that one, it doesn't have a map in it. So, any other comments on number two? No, we're moving to number two, unless you have something on number one that you didn't get to.
No, I was waiting for number two.
Okay, we're on number two. So when, I think it was Craig, the Manufactured Homes Association, said something like, made some reference to a King County TDR agreement, having a bell.
Right. So King County has a TDR program related to open space in critical areas. That's a countywide TDR. City of Seattle has used TDR for affordable housing, but I'm not aware of a King County program. I actually, he had given the name, I think his name was Mike Murphy. I actually called him at the county and left a message. I haven't heard back from him yet. But I, my understanding is that's exclusively for environmentally sensitive areas and critical areas, although the model is similar in terms of how you, what the county does is they're just providing a broader area within which to provide sending and receiving sites.
Right.
So you could take density... So you could take density from, in fact, I think a lot of the units were being used in downtown Seattle. You could take density from farmland or open space out in the valley and then transfer it into downtown Seattle where somebody wanted to buy the density credits. So I think that's the King County program.
So this so that's a little discouraging because I one of my concerns about TDR, I think it's a great idea. I think others share that that sort of perspective. But it's it's hard for me to know and understand how it fits into the receiving parcel. We can say, okay, there's a mobile home park and they have density and development potential. We want to preserve that park and let them but respect their property rights and let them sell their density, their unused density to another site. Well, that begs kind of the question, what's the other site? And how does that fit into the zoning allowances on the other site? If the other site only has 24 units per acre and they're getting close to that 24 units, what good does it do them to buy density credits from the mobile home community owner? And if we had a relationship with more with the King County at large or other jurisdictions, there might be more suitable sites where the density credits would better fit.
Right, I I definitely think that's a research question. Certainly, the TOD in Kenmore where you can get up to 150 dwelling units per acre, whether there's whether there's room there or a tradeoff for the affordable housing requirements. I mean, I think there are potential ways a program could be structured-
Right.
-that might make it workable.
Right, I mean, I think this is an interesting idea that could be that I'd like to propose to the city council, but the devil's in the details.
Right, correct.
The to to answer your question about the the density at the receiving sites, I'm not an expert on TDRs, but I do have some experience at Redmond. And downtown Redmond, they generally have a five-story limit, but you can get your sixth story there if if you buy TDRs to do that. So it's it's usually getting the TDR credits allows you to go beyond what the-
Zoning allows.
...base density limit is, right?
Right. In a TOD, however, Lori, it seems to me they've already got their big incentive, their density incentive. Why would they shop for more?
Well, what I guess one idea, and again, we haven't vetted any of these, but one idea would be to say you can go to the higher density and you're essentially providing your affordable housing by preserving the mobile home park.
Okay. But then the owner of the target, the recipient property would be paying the owner of the mobile home community.
Right.
Where we're linked in density rights and they wouldn't have to build affordable housing units because-
Right.
-that goal has been achieved by the trade.
It's just the scenario.
Yeah, no, I I think it's worth pursuing.
Right.
But it's too-
Yeah, so in Mike's-
Abstract, I think, right now.
In in Mike's example, they got additional height-
Right.
-and floor area as a tradeoff. You also can do, again, the straight unit-for-unit tradeoff, or you trade another option that I just mentioned is trading the affordable housing requirement, trading off against that. So anyway, again, there are lots of permutations, but if the commission is interested, we'll start down the road of trying to find comparable programs or flesh out ideas.
Well, let's see a show of hands here of commissioners who are interested. Yeah, yeah, of pursuing the details on how it might work.
Could you could we step back and go with one and see a similar show of hands?
Uh, let's have a show of hands on who wants to pursue proposal number one.
Pursue in terms of, Lori, bring in for more research or what are we?
Yes, what you're doing is saying this one might be something we're interested in and or we need more information. If you know that it's not something you would ever really be interested in, then we won't go to the trouble of-
Right.
-doing the research.
Right.
But again, the one thing to keep in the back of your mind is are there different treatments for the different mobile home parks?
Well, let me say this, you know, I've kind of expressed my skepticism toward number one because it doesn't really help preserve the ability to redevelop or increase supply in one form or another. But if you think there's a way that some city has done that and and balanced or or allowed both interests to be reached, both goals to be reached, I'm willing to listen.
Yeah, I I don't know.
Yeah.
If if there's an interest in me pursuing that question, I'm happy to do do that and come back with more concrete examples of what that might look like.
Yeah. Anybody on number one? Do you want Lori to pursue that? I'm kind of on the fence. I'm skeptical, of course, but if others want it. You know, I think that gets into the looking at the different parks differently, right? I was thinking of number one being intriguing for the nonconforming, right? If we wanted to give an opportunity to bring those into conformance, that seems to be one approach. It may not be the only approach, but that number one scenario of creating that as a permitted use would do that if that's something we want to do. Alternatively, right, they would continue to be nonconforming for the lifetime of the moratorium. Well, they would continue to be nonconforming, period.
Yeah.
And then the moratorium would control maybe the ultimate disposition of the property. Or how it could be, you know, reutilized. Right now, if I understand, the moratorium prohibits redevelopment of the- The zoning prohibits redevelopment because it's nonconforming, right? And the moratorium- Oh, the recent moratorium.
Right. The moratorium, again, is six months no redevelopment. The zoning currently would say it's a nonconforming use, so you couldn't really expand it or probably you couldn't completely redevelop it even if you left it as a mobile home park, I would guess.
Even after the moratorium expires?
Right.
Not sure how that changes scenario.
I just want to chirp in here.
Yeah, yeah.
My concern about scenario number one, it's going to be stagnation or nothing's going to happen and and the dilapidated parks are going to not do anything because, you know, there are no incentives. I mean, if you can find a success story behind some scenario one, like alluding to what you're talking about, Doug. So, you know, then I think it, yeah, we could look at it, but it just seems like it's it's just something to do nothing. I mean, that's what's-
And I think what you're saying, Lori, is you don't know yet.
I don't know yet.
Right. So I'm be inclined to look at some of the other ones we're more interested in before we have you do a little fishing expedition.
Fine, is that? I see two heads nodding.
Mine's a mine's a no. I don't know what nodding means. No, but I thought we were looking for hands for yes.
I know this is very preliminary, but one of the things that I thought about when I reviewed scenario one is I really don't know what the homeowner advocate person said. I don't remember what she actually said about wanting to advocate in favor of this type of a scenario. Plus, it doesn't really explain how you, if you do create some kind of a amended zoning, how does it remove the roadblocks to development or how are those roadblocks mitigated? If you put that zoning in place, does it just mean that to be developed, it has to be rezoned and reconsidered?
Right.
So it doesn't really do both of our goals. One of our goals is to preserve the current stock of these communities, but our other goal is to preserve the potential of adding density to our city.
Right, and and so this is the same point that Chair Nugent raised, which is that you might there you might eventually get the additional density, but they're still sort of playing off each other. To to get that additional density, the park, you'd still be looking at redeveloping the park.
So essentially, what we're trying to do is we're trying to come up with a inventory, our current mobile manufactured home communities, and also create a timeline of what we think might happen and then create those zones, maybe picking and choosing where we're doing that. But, you know, it's hard to see because we don't have a crystal ball. We we do have time, but, you know, that's why there's a moratorium, there might be some interest in some of these properties.
So do we? We need four four yeses for Lori to pursue it. I'm not seeing the four yeses.
I don't think we have them.
I don't. Well, that's what I'm asking, just to make sure. All right, so that's a no, I think, on pursuing number one, at least for the time being. So anything else on number two? I think we got a yes vote on pursuing more information there, so I think we're good with that. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I just wanted to check, and maybe this is part of what you're going to look into, but can you give us like some specific numbers on on the, I guess, the scale of opportunity for TDR? I mean, you mentioned one of them had, I think, was it 80 percent of maximum density? I mean, how many units are we talking about within the existing six parks? Or if you know that already?
So it it varies park by park. It also varies whether you do the calculation based on the lower end density or the higher end density, which is for residential density incentives, and that has to do mostly with affordable housing. So I did kind of go through a scenario looking at that. And so, I mean, I can tell you area by area approximately what those numbers are. If we want to look at the how do I make this go away? I'm going to call up one of these and I I'm sure I'm going to call up the wrong one. I think this is the one. Okay, so it's kind of hard to see, but this is a this is a list of the mobile home parks. And if you look over here, this column, and again, this was attached to your October 17th packet, it said an 11 by, well, you guys have it on your tablet, so you're not going to see that it's an 11 by 17 sheet. Anyway, this shows the number of existing units in this column. And then over here, it tells you what the zoning district is. These are the lower density numbers without the density incentives. This shows you then, based on the acreage, what the capacity might be. And then this shows the number of units, the ratio between the number of units and capacity. So you can see, for example, at Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park, they're at 88 percent, that they could get 65 and they have 57, so we're looking at eight units. The next one, you know, they're at 84 percent. Then you contrast that with other ones that are at a much lower relative ratio of existing to potential. So, for example, the last one has 20 existing units, the zoning capacity would allow up to 67, so that's a 47 unit difference, right? So it really varies park to park.
I'm the numbers guy, so I couldn't resist going and doing some totals here. And I think we started talking about this a couple meetings ago. If you eliminate the first two, which are basically at probably a functional capacity, seeing those are also the ones that have the shoreline limitations, that's probably as much as you could get there. If you just look at the last four, which you could, as we said, they're very low capacity. If you add that up, you've got 121 units on those four properties right now. The zoning would allow 348. That means there's 227 worth of unused capacity there, and we're at about 35 percent occupancy usage on those four properties. So no value judgment here, but that looks like a pretty good opportunity for whatever you wanted to do. The other thing that came to my mind is, and this is a question on the TDR, I'm curious about how you calculate that. Because if you give TDR on a site that has 22 percent occupancy today, are you essentially giving them development rights on property that hasn't been developed and probably won't be developed? Or do you give them a TDR only on the property, a portion of the property that's actually been developed? I I would think we would be providing a substantial windfall if we were to give TDR capacity allowance for portions of property that have never been developed, haven't been developed, even though it's been sitting there for, in some of these cases, 40 years.
I I guess I'm-
I'm curious to see how do how you calculate what the TDR credit is on a property.
Right, and-
Is it based upon occupied or is it total capacity, including unoccupied or unutilized?
I'm confused. Because, you know, the the parks are fully developed. Maybe you could squeeze one or two more units into those parks, but because of the layout, so the additional capacity has to do with redevelopment and the additional height and density you could get. So one approach to TDR would be to say the difference between what you could achieve if you redeveloped this park versus what you have now is the increment of TDR.
Okay, I think you've answered my question, so just to put it in different words. So the 121 that are on those four sites today, given the way the property is configured today, you couldn't put more than 121 on there.
I don't think so.
You would have to totally redevelop in order to get to the higher density.
Again, we may be working on the margins. I'm not familiar enough with how the layouts are. There are provisions, if you if you were nonconforming, you probably couldn't add a mobile home. But if you were not nonconforming, you might be able to put additional units, additional mobile homes into the park. But it would be, I'm sure, a very small number because there's it's not like there's a lot of vacant land in those parks.
That helps, thank you.
So what is being sold? What are the development rights that are being sold? The ones that you didn't develop?
Correct. Correct, and how that-
And is this, is this, go ahead.
And how that manifests itself, as we've discussed, could be any number of ways.
And is this under utilization because they're all single level and they could build up, but they haven't?
Pretty much.
Yeah. Okay.
So are we, when we're talking about TDR, is the credit then we're giving, we potentially would giving them credit for what the capacity would have been if they were to redevelop to the total capacity?
Right.
Less the current units.
Less the current utilization.
Right. Any other questions for TDR?
I I was going to say, I think that there are TDR programs that give you more of an incentive so that it's not just that difference, but it's some-
Multiplier.
Additional multiplier. Again, I haven't researched all these, and if it sounds like all of you are interested in this, so there's going to be a whole bunch of different facets and components to a potential TDR program. So we're probably going to have to come back with, you know, some to get some guidance on individual pieces that will fit together as a potential program.
The vice chair, head is-
Yeah, I just want to, so I think it was Mike and maybe Arthur at earlier meeting said that this has been used primarily for green space, the TDR concept, is that right? I just wonder if there are precedents for-
Yes, there are.
-you know, mobile home parks.
I'm not sure that there's one specifically for mobile home parks. I know, as I mentioned, City of Seattle has used it to preserve affordable housing, but I don't think they were probably mobile home parks. And so affordable housing, yes, mobile home parks, I'm not aware. Mike, do you know?
So at least theoretically, we'd be the pioneers in this or?
Well, I I don't think it's, the concept is not unique.
For mobile home parks specifically, though.
But it's the same thing. It's sort of the same measure. It's units, right? We're looking at units. That's the component, dwelling units. So I don't, I guess I don't see that as being greatly different if we're talking about density and dwelling units.
Well, the program may be the same, but I think Mark is saying we might break ground in terms of applying it to this land use.
Right, that's possible.
Okay.
That's what I was curious about, yeah.
Mr. Vanderline?
Again, just a point of information. So we've got 227, if we were to go up to total capacity, additional units. So, we've got 227, if we were to go up to total capacity, additional units. That would be potentially the maximum amount that would be available through a TDR arrangement. So somewhere in the city, we would be, somebody may buy those units, the rights to build those units, and want to put them somewhere in the city. We already have existing unit, existing zoning that we've gone through neighborhood by neighborhood and made some rules about what we wanted to have in terms of capacity limits or density limits there. How does the 227 play within that? It just feels like we've got this multivariate equation here that would really take a whole lot of work to understand what the real capacity is. So I guess there's two questions. One is, what are the limitations on the use of the TDR? Can you use it anywhere? How does that play against existing zoning density rules and capacity? And then, two, what really is the opportunity out there, given the answer to the first question, for using that 227? Where, where in the city would those potentially, could those potentially go?
Thank you, Mike. And this is why I was exploring the possibility of a multi-jurisdictional TDR relationship, because we may not be able to fit those 121 units in Kenmore, but there may be a good place in a surrounding city where it would be a really good fit. Yes, Mike?
I think that's an excellent thought, particularly if you think about if there are areas out, property values in Kenmore are high enough right now, they're only going to go higher. You could certainly get a bigger bang out of your buck for your 227 TDR credits in a less expensive area. Just like mobile homes were built on the fringes in the past, this is, I think, an opportunity to do the same sort of thing. You could build a lot more affordable housing, I think, if you were able to trade those units to build outside in a, in a lower cost-
Right.
Area.
But you're saying, Lori, I think, when I brought that up, you were saying, well, it's only been done in the context of a multi-jurisdictional agreement for green space, environmental protection.
Well, that's the King County model.
That's it.
Right. So has it been used somewhere in the country between multiple jurisdictions? I don't know the answer to that. I mean, the multi-jurisdictional notion, the ground has already been broken over this green space thing, and again, I'm going to try to get a hold of this-
There's not an existing template in this area where we could say, yes, we would like to sign on to that multi-jurisdictional-
I don't think so.
Right.
Right. And I'm going to talk to, as I said, this Mike Murphy with the King County Program. I hope that's his name.
He used to write music, I think.
And, and just make sure, or see if that group has had any discussions about other opportunities.
That could be a really, that could open this up quite a bit, and maybe bring other cities into a cooperative relationship, where TDRs are getting traded around this, if not this North Shore area, maybe the county. Okay. Next, I think we've exhausted number two, right? For now, okay. Scenario number three.
Okay. So number three is an approach where, and, and you would rezone for greater density and require inclusion of affordable housing with enough affordable housing units presumably to replace those in the existing mobile home park. So this is kind of the approach of saying, the question here is, are we trying to preserve the mobile home community, or are we trying to preserve the density? So this approach would preserve the density and would provide affordable units, but it wouldn't preserve the community.
Right.
So that's sort of the downside of this approach.
Right.
So, you'd have to do, looking at it, you'd have to do significant, if, for example, in the TOD, we say 10% of the units in the development must be affordable. If you were trying to keep to that lower threshold, you would have to dramatically increase the density. And I think Mike did, looked at a couple of them, and it was over 100-plus units per acre if you were going to make 10% affordable and keep it at, at that ratio. That might work for some of the parks that have a fairly low number of units, and, and the zoning already is pretty close to putting that number of units at the 10%. Other things, but some of the, the parks contain many housing units. That would be difficult to, I mean, you'd be, in some cases, at 30 or 40 or even 50% of the new development would have to be affordable, and it's affordable at probably less than 50% AMI.
Right.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's the third scenario. And I noted here that the transition is also an issue here, if you were thinking of the community, if you were concerned about that aspect, so.
I'm going to jump in because this is one I've kind of alluded to before, and, and when I see this diagram up here, and Commissioner Vanderline sort of pointed out, we've got a couple of parks that are near capacity, we've got more parks that are not, and we've got, as Commissioner McDonald pointed out, some parks are better suited for redevelopment than others. We have environmental constraints near the shoreline. This, I think, has a lot of potential. As you said, Lori, the downside is, we would not be preserving the, the existing form of housing, but it could create way more affordable housing that could accommodate the existing residents and other residents. And that's where we relieve pressure on the imbalance between supply and demand in the current housing market. So if we didn't just impose the affordable housing set-asides, but we upzone to allow for far more density in these areas, it's, Mike, I'm wondering, can we actually accommodate every existing homeowner and give them a right of first opportunity to buy or rent one of the new units at, you know, a suitable, affordable housing level, maybe 50% of Eddin County income? So that they, they have the opportunity that so many others want? Because they're being displaced, they would get the first chance to move into a new apartment at far less than market value. That actually, I think, puts them in a better position than they are now. I realize they're giving up something. They may want, they like the, the notion of partial ownership. They don't totally own their home because they have to pay rent for the ground, and that's where the point of tension is right now. The rents keep going up. But what they get instead is a far, they're paying market rate for what they have, they're paying way less than market rate for what they may get with a grand bargain, which greatly increases the density in certain mobile home parks, allows the owner to redevelop and realize the development potential of the park. It generates new investment in the city in, in areas where we want it to be. This is all, from what I'm seeing, near the business district, near the transportation district. So we could get Spencer 68s, where we now have mobile home parks, and people could get new apartments at affordable prices, and you can have the developer, the owner, getting market rate prices for the other units. So I see this as balancing all the conflicting interests better than any of the other proposals. The question is, what are the details again? How many, how much should it be upzoned? How many units is suitable for that area? How much should be set aside? Could it accommodate and still invite investment if we accommodated every existing mobile home tenant in the existing parks? I mean, that's a big lift, but if the density is increased, I think you can hit that, that point where it's still an attractive investment for redevelopment, and you can accommodate all the existing mobile home park tenants. I think about the, the project in Des Moines that Craig brought up. I know there was resistance from the owner, Craig expressed dissatisfaction because the owner really felt like he didn't have a choice. There was eminent domain, a public right of way was increased, it reduced the, it created burdens on the mobile home park owner. Ultimately, it was redeveloped, but I think Craig said the word hundreds of new units were developed, a lot of them were affordable, and I don't know the details or even the name of that development, but it struck me as a model that might really work in the way I just described. A lot of people might be getting affordable housing. A lot of other people get market rate housing that they otherwise wouldn't have been able to find. These are new units, they're, they're very desirable in this market, there's a premium for those. So it may have actually really helped the affordable housing climate in Des Moines, even though there was some displacement.
Yeah. I think there are a couple comments, and, and this really kind of gets to the goal of the project.
Right.
So, and, and earlier today, it was articulated very well. It's the, it's the question of, are we saving the mobile home communities and saving the parks, or are we saving affordability? There, there are kind of two different approaches. I, I do think that thinking of affordability, if it could pencil out, and that's a big if, given the 50% and the, the number of units on some of the parks, it may be that it would be way easier on some of the parks than on others of the parks. But it, it would be a question of not preserving the community itself, because it's not like those people are going to move, or maybe they're going to move to the street while they wait for the new units to be constructed. I mean, it will displace everyone that's in the current parks.
It's not a silver bullet, it's not, there are issues.
Right. Right. So the notion that then they'd move it back in, I think, is probably not likely, because it takes a year, year and a half, two years to develop a project, and where are they during this time? They're gone.
Well, I'd like to explore it. And I agree that, okay, you, you know, this is a proposal, and it would not preserve existing mobile home communities. On the other hand, I think it's an option we should present to the city council. I think we should explore it because it does address the root of this problem. We're not preserving mobile home communities solely because we like them better than apartments or condos or something else. We're trying to preserve them because the people who live there would be displaced if we didn't. So if we have a proposal that doesn't preserve them, but does provide more, you know, better housing options for them and others, then it's, I think, worth proposing. Mike?
I hesitate making this comment simply because I don't want to come off as heartless, and I don't feel at least a bit heartless on the subject. But listening, and I did have the opportunity to listen to the testimony from all of the folks at the last meeting, it, the impression, or one of the clear impressions I had was that, at best, for at least the, the older types of parks that are out there, they're just holding on. It's, it's at best a, a waiting game, that there really isn't much of a future for these. So in some cases, I really wonder if we're doing anybody any really good by trying to, to string this out any longer. Whereas if we could come up with a solution that resulted in a net increase in affordable housing, which they and others could take advantage of, that seems to be like a more hopeful long-term scenario than what we'd be looking at if we did nothing, which would be number one. And I worry, given some of the constraints, number two as well. So I, I look at that, and, and starting from there, I think you're absolutely right. We said this several meetings ago, that we really are trying to balance two things which may not be, we may not be able to do. So if one looks at this and said, we need really something that is more pragmatic and more hopeful in the long run for folks, then I think we are looking at some kind of a TDR solution, where we're trading off density and trying to create a new capacity. What that gets back to is, Lori, I think, your question about what makes this potentially economically viable. 10% isn't going to work with the numbers we've got. Just looking at the numbers on the four here, we need about 35% to replace the existing. If we were to say, we want to have the same number of units we have out there in mobile home parks today available as affordable housing somewhere down the line, we need to have about 35% of that. So the question I would have, and I do have a question at the end of all this, is what makes, at what price point does 35% become economically viable? And that, as we've said many times before, may be a question of time. Today, 35% may not be viable. In five years, that may look like a real deal to some developers. But having an idea of where that price point is, and I think we'd have to hear from developers themselves about how does, where's the upper limit on what you could afford to do, and what would you be able to provide with a 35%, given the capacity limits we have right now? Of course, the other thing we can give on is, we're looking at current zoning. If we were to upzone beyond that, is that possible? That unfortunately brings us back to my original question about where would this be? That may not be within, within Kenmore that could happen. So I think, at the risk of ending up in a circular situation here, I think there are some questions we can answer. One is how, what's the economic feasibility of a 35%? Where's the price point for that? And where would we be able to build that in Kenmore? If we can't build it in Kenmore, then I, we're back to, I think, Doug's idea of where could that be built?
But Mike, you're saying you couldn't build that in Kenmore. Are you talking now about TDRs? Are you talking about a grand bargain where you increase density? You upzone it, but you require set-asides?
Yes, you would upzone it. I mean, I think you've got two ways to look at this. One is you could upzone it, in which case you have the, the mobile home parks being replaced by, by higher density.
Right.
So that's one option.
Buildings or something.
Right. The other option is for, to trade off the, as TDRs.
Right.
And I'm not sure.
But I see them as different.
They are, they are very different.
Or at least I hear you blending, and I think, well, now that confuses it. I think the numbers, when you're talking about an upzone, or we could call it the grand bargain proposal, really depend on how much density you allow. You could get your 35% if there are enough market units to still make it economically attractive for an investor.
If, if, that's the best-
If there are 24 units an acre, that's not going to work. But if you go up to, you know, 80 units an acre, or 100 units an acre, and there's a couple acres there, that may work, right?
Yes, and I, I agree with you. I mean, I, I think the grand bargain-
Price points I'm thinking of.
Yeah. So we don't, I don't, myself, I don't know what that price point is. What is that occupancy?
Right.
What is that density amount that makes 121 units economically viable? And we need to find that out. Yeah, there's two ways to do that. One is to allow redevelopment and upzone in the existing areas, which at this point, I'm, I'm prepared to argue is probably the best policy way to do this. I'm less enamored, the more I think about TDRs, specifically because I don't know that they're really a pragmatic solution. Yeah, you could create 227 new units that you could trade off, but what's the likelihood of that regularly happening? And what's the likelihood of that happening in Kenmore? It's very low, whereas being able to upzone and do the grand bargain, I think, is something that you could, it's really a pragmatic solution that could actually happen.
I want to address that, that transition and dislocation point that you made, because it's a, it's a, it's a really good point. And what are people going to do for the year or two years while they're waiting to exercise their right of first opportunity? So let me think of two things. One, that right of first opportunity has a lot of value. You may, you know, imagine the length of the lines of people who want to get into a, a housing unit, a new housing unit that's costing 50% of market value. That, that's something people would wait for, I think. But if they couldn't or didn't like that, that option, maybe part of this is a relocation assistance program where they, they can choose. You know, I'll wait, exercise my right of first opportunity, or I'll instead take X dollars, which will help me mitigate the burden of finding that next unit and paying for the relocation costs. So it's sort of like what we did with the, the upzones in the neighborhood business districts. The developer has the option of setting aside a certain number of units or contributing to a city fund for affordable housing units. In this case, the developer might have, be contributing to relocation assistance instead. Anybody else? Vice Chair?
I'm, I'm wondering, Lori and Deb, if you can clarify, or maybe it's re-clarify for us, the council's expectation. I mean, what I saw was preserve existing affordable housing. How, can, can you tell us maybe a little more about what, you know, what they're looking for from us? Are they open to this sort of discussion about redevelopment and opportunities? Are they focused on really keeping the mobile home parks? What, what's their interest? If you could, again, sort of re-clarify what they're looking for from us?
Yeah. So the way the topic came on to the Housing Strategy Plan was not for or against, it was study this issue, see what you think- It was study this issue, see what you think, is it appropriate for Kenmore? Okay, so that was the initial discussion. I think the moratorium lends more weight to the fact that they at least want to consider preservation, literal preservation, not just preservation of affordable housing, but literal preservation. So, I don't know how the city council would fall out on this topic. It may be that if, for example, the commission as a whole was, you know, we're going to do more information, we're going to research TDR, we're going to research grand bargain, maybe the commission comes forth with, with two options and says, if your real idea was not preserving the parks, but preserving affordability, here's an option. If your real idea was preserving the parks, here's another option. So, um, I, I, I just don't know. I don't know if you want to add.
That's really where you would, you would have to land. So, I think, um, again, it's, it's balancing it, and if you think there's value in both, then you may be coming forward with options for the council and having them make the ultimate decision, or that's how it would go.
Right, I, I actually like what you said there. Yeah, that here are options for preserving, here are options for redevelopment, perhaps a grand bargain is part of that. So, I, conceptually, I like, obviously, there's a lot of details, but.
Yeah, you know, I wonder if they're really wedded to the notion of the mobile home park lifestyle, or they're wedded to protecting affordable housing. I get the sense it's the second, but, um, I mean, that was sort of the, the initial reaction was, okay, what are the ways we can? I mean, our original task was, what are proposals for protecting affordable housing or improving the housing market affordability? And then there was, well, these are the people most vulnerable. We've got these mobile home park residents, we know that, that those are attractive places for redevelopment, where will they go? I don't think it was, gee, I really like the double wide instead of the apartment building. I think it was, we got to do something for the people who would be displaced.
Well, I, I don't know if you could truly say that was fully the case. I think that would be reading into what you think the council might say. I think you also have to recognize that council is saying that the mobile home communities are providing the most affordable housing in Kenmore, and there is value to that.
Yeah.
There's also value, and I think you heard that from some of the representatives last week, and these are communities. These people value living in those communities, having their own unit, um, having families, being able to, they value that as a community. So, I don't think you could make that statement and say that council doesn't value that.
I'm inferring, I admit that, I'm inferring. All right, any other comments or on the grand bargain, we'll call it, proposal number three? What we call it, proposal number three. Commissioner Olson?
I'm not sure my comment relates to that directly, but we did get a letter indicating a lot of safety and security concerns with the older units. And I wish I could tell which of these bottom four have those problems.
If you scroll over to.
Well, I think we, we'll be coming back with a response to that, because I don't think, I think there's more information to come on that. I don't think the statements that were made in that letter, I think we would have to sort of respond to those statements. I don't know if they're a hundred percent true or not, and that's something that we would be following up on and bringing that back to your next meeting.
So, I can just follow up, that I had a, um, a conversation with Jeff Laflamme today, the fire marshal. And so, he's looking at the letter, and then he and I will be talking about it. I also talked with our code enforcement officer, and I'll be, I, I had a very preliminary conversation with our building officials. So, we're pursuing that question so that we can provide a response to Mr. Merron's letter.
So, one thing that comes to mind, because we did a rezone of the business corridor a couple of years ago, and Commissioner Vanderline was here then, and Commissioner Warren Shaw was here then, so you guys may remember this. We had a consultant come in and talk to us about what are the uses that might be more attractive? What kind of businesses do we want here? And we changed some of the uses. We have kind of an automobile intensive economy right now along 522. Those are not commonly the kind of uses that attract the kind of higher wage businesses that we're hoping to attract, that are, that's part of the growing economy in this region. We're looking for more office space, that kind of thing. So, we did grandfather and changed the zoning to prohibit make the auto sales or the, the big inventory auto lots of prohibited use along this business zone. And I wonder if any of the commissioners think that might apply to the mobile home communities? Would it, and these are downtown, you know, right behind City Hall, right along the water, right down by Kenmore Square, I think, that kind of thing. Is there, is it worth considering or looking at whether redevelopment might be more attractive for other investments and other, the kind of uses we want? Just as the automobile business wasn't as suitable for the, the vision we had for our business corridor, our mobile home parks near the business communities or in the commercial zoning districts, as good for attracting other investment and growing our economy as the mobile home parks? I know that's a sensitive thing to talk about, it was sensitive when we talked about it back when we rezoned. But I think it's a worthwhile topic. If we considered it then, should we consider it now? And if so, should we, are people interested in discussing? Mike?
Thanks, Doug, I think that's a very brave statement. I bet, my thought too was, we're assuming that we would see the mobile home park areas if they were being redeveloped, redeveloped as commercial sites. Uh, when we look at this site by site, does that really make sense? Could we get additional economic val- additional economic value which could be used to fund affordable housing? If locations that were more amenable to office or business or other economic uses, that they were allowed to redevelop in that way to generate additional funds that could actually create additional dollars for affordable housing elsewhere?
Are you talking about a mixed-use project?
Mixed use, or maybe not even mixed use. A- again, I think it's a, it's a property by a property evaluation. But if you look at several of the properties which are contingent, or, or.
Contiguous.
Contiguous, thank you, of the downtown as it is. I mean, right next to City Hall, in, in the economic corridor that we're building, is residential, are we correct in assuming that residential is the highest economic use for that property? Could it be redeveloped at a higher value, which could then, some of it could be captured for public use if we, if we rezoned it to allow other uses, other than just residential?
So, so the zones, except for the two by the river and the one on Botha Way, all the ones at this north part are already zoned either for downtown residential or downtown commercial. But multifamily is a permitted use, and you could consider that the mobile home parks in some way are a multifamily use, and you can do standalone multifamily in these two zones.
So, if it was redeveloped as a strictly commercial redevelopment, is there a way to capture some of the economic value to support affordable housing in the, uh, through there?
I, I don't think so. If it were exclusively commercial, it, that'd be more like an impact fee, and I'm not sure that you can do that.
I think we had this discussion in the past, so. But we, is it, so the question, is there a potential for being able to do that? And would we end up, if we were, if we did do that, particularly in certain parcels, would we end up with a higher contribution available to, for, for affordable housing if it was strictly either just mixed use or strictly residential?
Scott, you know, I, maybe some areas should be, you know, the, the apartments we're talking about and, and other areas that are good for.
Yeah.
Mobile homes.
Right.
Because, you know, that, that's, you were making a value judgment, I guess. You know, this one is, should be maybe commercial or whatever. And the one down here, we want to give them incentives to stay a thriving park and say, they'd have both of them, to do number three, and then do something for the parks down on the water to make them more viable and, 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 uh, long-term. And you have nice units, and that's, you know, I think you could do both.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else? All right, we gave that a lot of attention, number three. Are we ready for four?
So, what, the outcome with three, we needed to vote?
Yeah, all in favor of pursuing proposal three for further discussion, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay.
Okay, so, uh, the fourth scenario would be to expand the mobile home park zoning in the city to create and allow new mobile home parks and provide relocation opportunities. So, this scenario would allow redevelopment of the existing parks, but there would be a new place, uh, a new place developed that preserved that style of housing. Of course, challenges include where you cite and develop a new mobile home park and how you would finance that approach. So, that would be just a, a relo- it's a different kind of a relocation question.
Right.
But would preserve the type of housing.
Questions, comments?
If there's a motivation to do it out there, if somebody wants to develop it, do we have land that is amenable to that?
Well, it, it, I don't know whether we have land or not. It's, it's probably more a question of the zoning that would allow or prohibit it and where that might be. It would be a, a question of looking through our zoning districts to see where it would or wouldn't be permitted and whether, I, in fact, I think one of the owners who was here last time said particularly in the R4 zone. I'm not sure that's ideal, that R4 zone is typically a environmentally sensitive, typically slopes. That's why that designation was put on it. But I think that was a question, could we, should we look at some of our zoning districts to see if it would be permitted?
So, I think what you're saying is redevelopment of existing parks, but allow zoning that would allow, or change zoning to allow for mobile home parks elsewhere in the community? So, that there would be this, it would be, it wouldn't be preserved, it'd be replaced by a newer version of the same thing.
Correct.
And my concern is that we still, first of all, it sounds even more difficult to imagine the, the transition than the people who would have to wait for the new apartments in a grand bargain proposal. Because I think the options are so limited on finding the replacement mobile home park area and the likelihood that somebody would do that instead of building multifamily housing, or condos, or a business, or something like that. The other thing is it doesn't increase the supply of housing. So, we're sort of stuck with the same conflict we had with proposal number one.
Well, it would allow redevelopment.
In the new park?
In the, oh, on the old property.
Yeah, okay. Just seems like such a long shot, because I can't think of any place that would be likely to convert to a mobile home park that's currently being used for another use. Nobody? Anybody? All right, I think we're ready for, all in favor of pursuing this proposal, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, that's a not-for-now kind of thing, and then we're on to scenario five. Lori?
All right, so scenario five tries to deal somewhat with the transition question. So, you would divide these properties. So, you'd allow greatly increased heights and density on a portion of the property, preserving, um, perhaps another portion for the continued operation of the mobile home park, or you'd look at something like a cottage development. Again, this is brainstorming, I don't know of any case where this has ever been done. I was merely trying to think of ways that you could accomplish both of the goals. Increase the density, but preserve what's existing.
Questions? Lori, for this scenario, do you imagine the elimination of some of the mobile units to make room for the higher-density unit?
Yeah, I think so.
But would it be on the same property, or would we just designate?
This was envisioned to be the same property.
Okay, wow.
That's like a partial redevelopment.
Yeah.
Did you have any specific property in mind? You were just kind of drawing the dart, huh?
Right, I, some of the properties, they're fairly, they're not gigantic, but they're good size, three, four acres, and whether there was room to do something on a part of the property.
That's what I'd like to call the King Solomon proposal.
That's a good description.
So, I'm, I'm probably not going for it, but anybody else is? No?
I think it's probably the least feasible.
But.
Good imagination, though, Lori.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that. I, I commend the brainstorming effort there. All right, scenario number six.
Okay, so scenario number six is really a, a question that will ultimately fall before the city council, but it would address providing direct financial assistance either from the city or a nonpro- somehow supporting a nonprofit or something like that to purchase a park, uh, which would allow the owner to sort of take the money and go elsewhere. So, that's one for the council to address, presumably the development would occur somewhere else.
Well, but this brings up the ROC program, right?
It could bring up the ROC, that's one option, right.
And I thought there was interest on both sides for that, and I find that an intriguing idea. I mean, there were some, I remember the, uh, the mobile home park owners were saying, yeah, but there's a cap rate requirement, it has to be higher, and to get a higher cap rate, the purchase price has to be lower. So, I'm not sure that's, you know, why would they choose a lower ROC proposal to a market proposal? I don't think they would. But if there is a way the city might bridge that gap, or if there's, uh, other, other ways we could encourage the, the tenants to buy the mobile home park for certain parks, that might be a good idea. Go ahead.
Um, it is something that I asked last time, but recently in the news, there was a mobile home park that was purchased. It was purchased, I think, by the city of Redmond and King County to preserve mobile home park communities.
It was bought by the King County Housing Authority.
Okay, so that is an idea that I think kind of fits under this category. I'd be very interested in pursuing what the details of that are, just so we can understand it a little better.
My concern is that, again, we're limiting the, the redevelopment potential of these parcels in certain locations. Now, as Commissioner McDonald said, there might be some mobile home parks that are well-suited for preservation. There might be others that are well-suited for redevelopment. So, I think, at least for those parks that might be well-suited for preservation, this is worth pursuing. I think it, to me, it's something with a limited potential, because we do want, I think, I want more supply of housing to help affordability overall for the city, but I think for certain parks, uh, it might work. And it's worth, it's something I would support further, uh, analysis of. Mike?
I agree there, I think there, at least of the possibility that there may be some of the parks, or some park that would be economically viable for the tenants to, to purchase it. In terms of bridging the gap, one of the things, would it be possible, rather than looking at a cash transfer from the city, could we extend the city's credit to allow for the purchase at a lower mortgage rate, percentage rate? So, that's the, instead of actually putting up a capital cash investment by the city, the city would take on a, a risk or as a.
A guarantee.
A guarantor, yeah, yeah. Whether that was through a bond or a guaranteed loan or a, a cosignature on the overall property. I don't know, not sure how, if, what the legality of that is. I mean, there certainly are similar sorts of bonding districts and special districts that have been created to develop that kind of funding for other uses in the past. I don't know if that's something that could be useful here.
Or a combination of that with the direct subsidy?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's an intriguing idea. Any other questions on that one? No? All in favor of pursuing this, the, at least the ROC version of this? Can we call it that? I think we're on the same page. You know, helping current tenants purchase the mobile home park? We'll call it that. Raise your hand? Okay, looks like we've got it.
Just a follow-on comment. This last one, number six, going back to Debbie's suggestion, recommendation, that we need to come up with proposals to support two different ways of looking at this. I would see number six as one of the proposals we could put in front of the city if you're highly valued, preserving the communities of the mobile home parks as communities. This would be probably your most viable economic way of going about it.
Yeah, you know, the owners, you know, I've expressed concern about how the people who've invested in this land and made it available for mobile home park use, I'm very uncomfortable with taking away their development rights and punishing them for essentially making what was an investment that benefited a lot of low-income housing. And this is a way they could at least realize the value, the real market value of their property. So that's, and again, there are certain, I mean, I think the grand bargain's a better way to go, but as Commissioner McDonald pointed out, I think there probably are certain communities that are better suited for preservation than others, that already have environmental constraints, like the ones near the shoreline, so...
I think it's impossible to bridge the gap. If our value was really, and we wanted to support maintaining these communities, that there's going to have to be an economic-financial gap that's got to be bridged somewhere by the city. So it really comes down to what are the options and the ways to do that?
Right. But there is a program, Mike, and I don't know if you saw this in the materials from the last meeting. What was the name of the group? We called it ROC, and there was a state agency that helped tenants finance the purchase. Is that right?
Right, it's the Housing Finance Commission. I'm missing a word in there. But it's a program run by the state that helps, I think, form these rock. And that's when the residents purchase the parks.
All right. Anything else? Lori?
So those were my creative six scenarios, and so now, I don't know if you all have any other creative scenarios that you want to throw out.
Anybody? No? All right. Well, I am curious, as we look at different scenarios, what's the baseline of no recommendation? What occurs when the six-month moratorium expires and we don't recommend, if we were to not recommend the council take any type of action, what would, what would that path look like?
I think, again, there would have to be options presented. So if the commission decided that this was a strategy, preserving existing affordable housing and starting with the mobile home parks is not a viable solution for Kenmore, I don't think you could go to the council with that recommendation without a corollary option. I really think that you would have to provide an option, because they've made it clear, I think, through the placement of the moratorium, that they're expecting something that reflects preserving existing affordable housing. So not to do that. I personally would not recommend that. I would think that you would have to have an option.
I'm just trying to imagine what our scenarios are improving upon, right? I mean, many of these mobile home parks have been in place for, as Mike said, 40 and 50 years, and they're still there.
Correct.
So the economic forces have not yet taken effect to close those down and force higher density or other used development?
Yeah. I will say that I think that at least some of them were purchased with the intent to eventually redevelop. So I don't think we could say that they're never going to redevelop.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that they, to date, have not, while our area has gone through huge housing...
And the other thing I'll say is that that takes me back to scenario one, where what you say is, it's not going to happen anyway, and so why not? Scenario one is sort of like the moratorium. It says, you can't do anything until you come before us and tell us what it is you're going to do and how we're going to solve this problem.
Commissioner Vanderline?
Wait, I've framed the question for myself, is that if you look pragmatically at the state of affairs, we haven't seen a redevelopment yet, but it appears to be almost inevitable. And if we do nothing, then what's likely to happen is we'll have redevelopment, and as a result of that, we will lose affordable housing in the city. So the question is, how do we accommodate, how do we face up to the fact that there is going to be redevelopment? And how do we allow that to happen in a way that preserves or maybe even enhances the availability of affordable housing in the city? And I think if that's what the city council is asking us to answer, then we've got scenarios we can provide for them that would allow them to do it. We also have, if the city council really wants to place a high value on preserving the mobile home parks as they are, so they're putting an equal or greater value on that versus preserving affordable housing, then we can give them a scenario for that, too. There are actions that they could take, it's going to, and I think that's our to-do, and that's how I've looked at it. If we just kept steady state, eventually, this is going to end up in a suboptimal solution. The market's not going to deliver what we want.
Was there a, an event that...
It's what we want.
Was there something that, like, some kind of market activity that induced the city council to pass the moratorium?
That, I don't quite know how to act, no. There's been no market activity.
It was just coincidental that they decided a few weeks ago, let's pass a moratorium?
It's not uncommon, if you want to make sure that, if, once regulations are started, so there's often the desire then for property owners will sort of rush in the door to try and vest before the rules change. And you then may not end up where you, you know, ultimately, the recommendation is. And I think that was the reason why the planning commission, I mean, the council, put the moratorium in place, is because without that moratorium, and the property owners are going, we don't know what the recommendation's going to be, so we're going to submit some kind of redevelopment permit as a vesting tool.
I agree, but that was true a year ago, when we made our housing, affordable housing presentation.
That's true, but now it's been sort of a direct, this is what you will do, so now that it's becoming more of a reality than it was a year ago, so now the reality is becoming, it is becoming more real.
There's no rumors or anything out there about somebody thinking about developing, redeveloping, or buying one of the mobile home parks?
There's always a potential, and we know that some of the property owners may be more, and I think you heard from last week, some of them are interested in retaining them, some of them may be more interested in redeveloping sooner rather than later. And without knowing those details, I think that's what sort of the council, prompted the council to say, without knowing what's going to happen, the only way to sort of preserve the options is to have the moratorium for a limited period of time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've satisfied that element of the agenda, as far as I can tell. The next item here is canceled, December 19, 2017, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to cancel?
Motion to cancel.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We want discussion on this? No. Analysis, I think. All right, all in favor of canceling December 19? Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand, say nay. Any abstention? Motion carries, the meeting is canceled. All right, any new business to report or announcements?
Well, are we meeting on January 2nd? Because I'm not going to be here, just so you know.
The plan is to meet on January 2nd. As you recall, your January 16 meeting was canceled because the city council had to take that night. So I don't know, we had hoped that January might be a time of public involvement, so it'll kind of depend on how far we get. Are there other commissioners who don't think they'll be around on January 2nd?
What bowl game is that?
Fiesta Bowl.
Oh, it'd be the Fiesta Bowl.
And I will be there.
Fiesta Bowl exemption is in place for the January 2nd. Everybody else thinks they can make it?
I'll be here.
All right.
So, and the little treats at your place, we're to say happy holidays.
Thank you. Can we open it now, or do we have to wait till...
You can do whatever you want.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much.
A cookie.
All right, no other announcements? No other new business? For being that, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.